Are you planning on taking the TOEFL English exam anytime soon? Or do you just want to practice your English speaking and listening a bit more? Then today's study session is perfect for you. In today's
One hour and forty-five minutes.
relaxed study session, we're going to do things a bit differently than usual. Instead of heavily focusing on reading and vocabulary, we're gonna put those on the back burner. And today, we're going to spend a lot more time with our speaking, listening, and writing. And while today's study session is mostly intended on helping students prepare for the TOEFL English exam, the same speaking, listening, and writing exercises are great for anyone looking to improve their English fluency. For today's study session, we're going to begin with a fun warm-up activity that's really going to help you with quickly brainstorming topic ideas for the independent speaking question, or just help you come up with ideas quickly for conversations in daily life. Then we're going to move into our independent speaking practice. During this time, we're going to review and practice a few different kinds of independent question styles and discuss why you can't rely on one template to answer any kind of independent speaking question that you may come across in the exam. After that, we'll move on to the integrated speaking section, which combine reading, listening, and speaking. It's a lot. With these questions, we'll review how to pick out key information from the reading and listening sections and talk about how to structure your answers to get the best score possible. So first, we'll learn how to answer the campus life question. And you'll get to do two practice questions on your own. After that, we'll take a look-see at the integrated lecture-style question, where you'll also get to practice two of those questions on your own. And then we will look at the listening lecture-style question, where we'll first walk through this script together and talk about how to optimally answer this question. And then you will get to practice one on your own. And finally, we'll wrap up today's study session with the academic discussion writing prompt. We'll first discuss two different templates that you can use for all academic discussion questions. And then I'll have you put that knowledge to use by practicing two different writing prompts. And because today's video is going to be quite long, I will definitely include timestamps in the description box so that you can jump ahead to any specific section that you would like to work on. Now, because the TOEFL is a timed test for all these different questions, I will have a timer somewhere on the screen. But if you are not preparing for the TOEFL or if you're at the beginning of your TOEFL preparation journey, feel free to ignore the timer and just pause the video if you need a bit of extra time preparing or answering any of your questions. Today, we're going to keep it pretty simple in terms of what you'll need to be successful in today's study session. First, you'll either need a quiet place to study in or a good pair of headphones because there will be a lot of listening required. Second, you'll need somewhere to write. Now, if you are preparing for the TOEFL exam, keep in mind that for the test, you'll have a piece of paper to write down all of your notes. And then you'll have to type for the writing section. So it might be useful for you to practice in that same way. But if you're not too concerned about it, just write wherever you want, on paper, on the computer, it doesn't matter. And finally, studying doesn't have to suck or be uncomfortable. So try to find a nice cozy space or create your own cozy space. To make my space feel a little more comfortable and cozy, I grabbed one of my favorite sweaters and I lit one of my favorite crackle candles that smells like a yummy latte. And of course, don't forget to grab some kind of snack or drink. We're going to start out today's study session with my favorite warm-up for helping students quickly come up with ideas for the independent speaking question, my infamous random topic generator. Now, to be completely transparent, I usually use this website to randomly generate topics when I'm doing this exercise with my students. But because there are so many advertisements on the page, for the purpose of today's video, we're just gonna use good old ChatGPT. I've found that the best way to generate this random topic list is to use this prompt. Please make a list of five randomly generated conversation topics. So let's take a look at what it gave us. And yes, I do say please and thank you with ChatGPT because if there is a robot or AI revolution, I want it to remember that I was polite. So now that we have our list, we're going to go through each one and quickly brainstorm ideas in a similar way that we would come up with ideas for the independent speaking question. But you don't need to worry about organizing them into sentences or anything. We're just coming up with ideas, that's all. So let's look at question number one. If you could instantly learn any new skill or language, what would it be and why? So for this, I want you to quickly brainstorm what that skill or language would be and two reasons why. You've got thirty seconds. If I could instantly learn a language, it would definitely be Korean. I should have learned it many years ago. Number two, what's one fictional world you would love to live in and how would your life be different there? So similar to that previous question, I want you to think of that world and two ways that your life would be different. I would definitely love to live in Valaris, the city of starlight. Let's take a look at number three. Do you think technology will ever fully replace teachers in education? Why or why not? So for this one, you need to decide yes or no and two reasons why you believe that. Well, I certainly hope that technology won't replace us, but I honestly don't think it will. Especially for language learning, you really need that human touch to help you learn the nuance and emotion behind languages. Number four, what's the most interesting or unusual food you've ever tried? And would you eat it again? So for this one, I want you to brainstorm ideas for it a little bit differently. So one, you need to tell what the food is. Then I want you to describe the food, explain where or when you had it, and then talk about if you would or wouldn't want to try it again. I think the most unusual food I've had was in Korea, I ate raw octopus legs. And they're really funny because sometimes they move and like crawl across the table. So you have to catch them with your chopsticks really quickly and also chew them really quickly or else they'll stick to the side of your mouth. It's pretty entertaining to try and eat it after you've had a few shots of soju. And finally, let's look at number five. If you could travel to any historical period, which era would you choose and what would you do there? So for this one, first I want you to brainstorm what historical era would you go to? It would also be nice if you could explain why you would want to go there. And then, of course, you need to describe what you would do in that era. I think if I was to go back to any historical period, I would love to go back to the early nineties as an adult so that I could really enjoy the music scene. Because I was born in ninety-one, so I couldn't exactly go to concerts when I was a baby. Now it's time to move on to our TOEFL speaking practice. We're first going to focus on our independent speaking question by looking at a few question styles that you may come across and discuss how you can optimally answer each one to get the highest score possible. The first kind of question that you may come across is the agree or disagree question. With these questions, you'll be presented with a statement and then asked if you agree or disagree with that statement. Though sometimes it is switched and it'll say, do you agree or disagree with the following statement? And then it'll present the statement to you. So here's the process to structure your answer for these kinds of questions. First, decide whether you agree or disagree. This seems pretty obvious, but sometimes students do have a hard time deciding which side they want to take. But remember, you don't have to follow your heart when you're creating your answer. All you need to do is pick whichever side you can come up with the best reasons for. And sometimes, that's not the side that we truly believe in. It honestly doesn't matter, though. The TOEFL is just an English exam, it's not a lie detector test. After deciding which side you're going to take, you need to figure out your reasons for choosing that side. Now, most TOEFL teachers and textbooks will insist that you need to have two different reasons. And while I do agree with that, there will be some situations where that's just not possible, such as if you speak a little more slowly and you're just not able to fit those two reasons into the forty-five seconds of answering time. Or if maybe you just cannot think of a second reason to support your answer. So in this scenario, it's much better to come up with one reason and then really strong examples to back up that reason rather than saying nothing at all. Now let's take a look at how to structure your agree or disagree answer. You could totally say, I agree or disagree that, very important, statement because... Remember, don't say for two reasons. But that would be kind of lame and it actually wouldn't earn you very many points, even if it is grammatically correct. Because this shows that you don't have a very broad vocabulary and you're not able to make new sentences. You're only good at copying what's in front of you. Instead, I recommend using phrases like, I strongly believe that, and then include a paraphrased statement, is beneficial, awful, some other kind of adjective, because. This kind of introduction sentence allows you to showcase a wider range of vocabulary and it shows the scorer that your English skills are good enough to correctly paraphrase a statement. Now you'll notice that this introduction sentence isn't finished. It ends with because, dot-dot-dot. And that's because we're going to integrate our first detail into that introduction sentence. A lot of students will do an introduction sentence and then say first or firstly, give their detail an example, and then second or secondly, and give their detail an example. And the bad thing about this is it doesn't give you room for flexibility in case you run out of time and can't do the second statement. And using first, firstly, second, or secondly also is not going to be beneficial because that vocabulary is so boring and basic. You will not get any additional points for advanced vocabulary if you use first and second as your transitional words and phrases in your speaking and your writing. But don't worry, we'll discuss what words and phrases to use instead. So after you state your first detail, then you're going to move on and provide an example or more details to back up that reason. In an ideal situation, you will have time to do your second reason. So let's talk about how you can transition into that second reason. So like I just said, please don't say second or secondly because those words suck. They're so lame, they're the worst, I never want to hear them or read them ever again. But what can you say instead? I always recommend using words or phrases like in addition, additionally, or my favorites, moreover, and furthermore. Which do you think sounds better, secondly or furthermore? I think it's pretty obvious which one is gonna get you the higher vocabulary score on the exam. So after choosing your transitional word or phrase, you can go ahead and provide that second detail and example. But what about a conclusion? Honestly, they aren't necessary. It would be more ideal for you to provide more details and examples so that you can expand that topic development rather than wasting your time on a ten-second conclusion. However, if you're watching the clock and you realize that you have only five seconds left, you can use some kind of quick conclusion statement. Doesn't have to be fancy, just something like, and that's why I believe that, whatever the statement is, is good. It's just long enough to fill that tiny five-second gap. Okay, so now that we have all this in mind, let's practice answering an agree or disagree question. I'll read the question out loud to you. Then you will have fifteen seconds to prepare your answer and forty-five seconds to speak your answer out loud. But remember, you can always pause if you need a bit of extra time. Explain whether you agree or disagree with the following statement. Children should not be allowed to play video games. Then give specific details in your argument. Great job. Now let's take a look at another type of independent speaking question that's all about preference. In this question, you'll be given two different options and asked which one you prefer. Now you'll basically structure your answer in the same way as the agree or disagree question type, but we will change a few things. For your introduction statement, you'll say something along the lines of, I believe that paraphrased choice is the best, is more ideal, is some other kind of positive adjective, because, dot-dot-dot. Then for the rest of your answer, you'll structure it in the exact same way as your agree or disagree answer. Let's practice. Some people like to vacation at the beach, whereas others prefer to go to the mountains when they're on vacation. Which do you prefer? Include some examples and details to support your answer. And finally, let's discuss the description-style questions. With this question type, you do have to be really careful to not rely too much on your opinions because the purpose of this question is for you to describe things, not talk about how you feel. You also have to be really careful about the tense that you're using in your answer because the question will probably be pretty specific to a certain time period. Let's take a look at this example question and walk through it step by step to see how you would structure your answer. Talk about a special job that you have had in the past or would like to have in the future. So first of all, it's not asking about your opinion or your feelings. So you should not say, I believe that, or from my point of view, because that would be weird. What you should do if you're going to describe a job that you had in the past is start out your answer like, when I was in high school, twenty-five years old. Describe some other kind of timeframe. I worked as a... And then tell what your job title was for your next sentence. It was special, impactful, important, some other kind of adjective, because, dot-dot-dot. Then you will provide your specific reasons and examples using the same kind of structure that we had in the agree, disagree, and preference answers. Now with this one, you have to make sure that you're doing it in past tense because it's asking about your past. Or if you decide to answer a job that you would like to have in the future, you need to use that specific tense as well. So in that case, you might start out your answer like, I would like to be an astronaut in the future. I want to do this because, whatever. So now let's have you answer one of these questions on your own. Think of one place where you have never visited but where you would really like to go. Explain what it is that interests you. Let's jump into our integrated speaking section. First up, campus life. For this question, you'll first start out by reading something related to universities. That might be an announcement from the university about something that will happen. It might be an announcement about a proposed change. So it might happen or it might not happen. Or you might read a letter from a student in the school newspaper arguing or discussing a change that they want to be made. It is crucial that you pay attention to the format of the reading material because it will directly impact how you structure your introduction sentence. After your forty-five seconds of reading, you will then listen to a conversation between a male and female student discussing the reading material. After that, the question will pop up on the screen and it will be read out loud to you. But here's the thing, the question for this campus life situation is the same, always. It's always going to be the man or woman expresses their opinion of the reading material. State his or her opinion and explain the reasons they give for holding that opinion. It's always the same, every single time. So instead of sitting and listening to the question and reading it carefully on the screen, just start preparing your answer during that time because then you'll get an extra ten to fifteen seconds of preparation time. So after the question is read out loud to you, you'll then have thirty seconds to prepare your answer and one minute to speak. So let's discuss how to easily structure your answer. First, your introduction should essentially be a quick summary of the reading material. If it's an announcement about a change, your sentence will start out like, the university will, and then give that quick summary. If the reading is about a proposed change, you can say, the university is considering, whatever. Or the university may, whatever. And if the reading material is a letter, which you will clearly know because at the end of it, it'll say sincerely or from, and then a person's name. because at the end of it, it'll say sincerely or from, and then a person's name, you can start your introduction by saying, "The student suggests," and then summarize the letter. Today we'll practice the university announcement and the student letter question styles. For your introduction sentence, you really want to make sure that you're not spending more than fifteen seconds answering it. Ideally, it should be ten seconds or less. If you're doing more than fifteen seconds, that's really going to eat into your topic development time to discuss what's happening in the conversation. After your quick introduction sentence, you'll then move on to describing what the speaker's opinion is. While you're listening, you'll easily be able to notice which speaker you really need to pay attention to, because one of them will be talking way more than the other one. So don't worry about getting confused about whose opinion you should be paying attention to. Trust me, you'll be able to figure it out. So to transition from your introduction sentence into the student's opinion, you can structure the sentence like this. "The man or woman supports or doesn't support this because..." "...dot, dot, dot," and then move directly into that first reason. Again, don't waste time with your four-two reasons bullshit. Then you can use that same transitional word or phrase that we discussed in our independent speaking question to transition into your second reason why the student does or doesn't support the university thing. Now let's practice two university life questions. We're going to use practice tests that I have available on my website exclusively for my TOEFL students. So if you go onto my website, cammiesenglishcorner.com, you actually won't be able to find these TOEFL resources, and that's because I do have them password protected for my TOEFL students. So if you want to get access to these, you do have to sign up for my TOEFL classes. But let's go ahead and take a look at our first test. So for our first university life question, we're going to look at the test one that I have available on my website. So we can see right here, we have the integrated conversation question. So you'll have forty-five seconds to do the reading. Then we'll go straight into the listening section. After that, I will read the question out loud, and then you'll have thirty seconds to prepare your answer. And finally, you will have one minute for your spoken answer. After that, we will go through this together to discuss which key points you should have included in your answer. Now because we have the listening section, I will go ahead and blow out my crackle candle, even though it does smell so nice. But I'm doing it for you. Let's begin.
Now listen to two students discussing the letter.
So Jane, what do you think of Eric's proposal?
I'm all for it.
So you think it's true, what he says about the problems with the way it's been done?
Well, yeah, I do. Take his first reason, like, "I know you don't drive, but I do drive here every day, so I need a place to park my car. And remember last year when they decided to repair some of the parking lots?"
Oh yeah, I remember that. There was a lot of work going on, wasn't there? Starting in December.
Right. At least four lots were closed, and that meant there weren't enough parking spots for students' and professors' cars. I usually had to circle around looking for parking on one of the streets, and then walk from the street all the way to my classes.
That's annoying.
Yeah, and it happened to a lot of other people in my classes, too. People were always arriving late because of all the trouble they had parking. Sometimes even my professors were late.
Yeah.
And also, his second point, that makes sense, too. I mean, for instance, part of the reason those parking lot repairs last year took so long was because of the big snowstorms. They had to keep stopping, sometimes for a week or two at a time, because of snow and ice on the ground.
Yeah, I remember that. We had a bunch of big snowstorms right in a row last year.
Yeah, so with all that starting and stopping because of the weather, the job took them a lot longer to finish.
Question: The woman expresses her opinion about the student's proposal. Briefly summarize the proposal, then state her opinion about the proposal, and explain the reason she gives for holding that opinion. So how'd you do? Let's take a look at the key information that you should have included in your introduction sentence. So right off the bat, you'll notice that this was a letter from a student. So your introduction should have started with, "The student argued that," or "The student stated that," or "The student believes that." And let's look through the reading sentence by sentence to see which pieces of information are most important. So if we look at this first sentence, "I've noticed that small construction projects on campus, like fixing sidewalks, ah, take place during the school year." Is that an argument that we need to include? No. Let's look at the next one. "I propose that whenever possible, the university should schedule such construction projects to take place during the three-month summer break." Does that seem like a sentence that we need? Hell yeah! It literally says, "I propose that." That is his opinion, Mr. Eric Hughes. That's what he believes. What about the next sentence? "One reason is that the construction projects can be so disruptive and da-da-da-da-da." If you have time to include this, great. But you don't really need to include the reasons and extra details that are provided in the reading material. You really just need to focus on that main idea. But let's still look at the last sentence. And second, "Construction projects would be more likely to be completed quickly, na-na-na." Is that something that we need? Not really. Another hack that you can use to quickly answer this question is to simply look at the title. "Campus construction should happen during the summer." So you could literally just say, "The student argues," or "The student believes that" "campus construction should happen during the summer." Easy peasy. Now let's take a look-see at the script for the listening section to see which key ideas are the most important to include. So right here in the beginning, "So Jane, what do you think of Eric's proposal?" Is that important? No. What about right here? "I'm all for it." Hmm, does that seem like it's showing her specific opinion of agree or disagree? Heck yes, it does. She agrees with Mr. Hughes. So do you think it's true? Is that important? No, obviously not. Well, yeah, to take his first reason, like, "I know you don't drive, but I do every day, so I need a place to park my car. And remember last year when they decided to repair some of the parking lots." Is that part important? Not really, because it's just a few half ideas. "You don't drive, mm, I drive, eh, I need a place to park my car." But so what? She didn't really explain anything else. Then the male student, "I remember that. There was a lot of work." Important? No. "Right, at least four lots were closed, and that meant that there weren't enough parking spots for students' and professors' cars. I usually had to circle around, huh, then that." So does that include pertinent information? Yes. She's talking about how there weren't enough parking spots for students and professors, and they wasted a lot of time and were late for classes. That is a solid detail that you need to include. Male student, "That's annoying." You're annoying, sir. Female student, "Yeah, it happened a lot to people in my class, and they were always arriving late." So that's just a continuation of the previous point. Everyone was late. Male student, "Yeah, thanks, bro." And then finally, and also his second point, that makes sense, too. For instance, "Part of the reason those parking lot repairs last year took so long was because of snowstorms." So she literally says, "part of the reason," and then she talks about the snowstorms. Then the dude, "Yeah, we had a bunch of snowstorms," like, she already said that. Thanks, bro. And then the woman, with all the starting and stopping, "The job took them a lot longer." So you can include that, too. Now let's look at another university question style. So with this one, it's about the university's plan. Remember, you will answer this differently compared to the student letter style. So let's take a look.
Now listen to two students discussing the letter.
Did you see this letter, Molly?
Yeah, but I don't agree with him.
Why not?
Well, it might have some educational benefit for the people doing it, but overall, for the other students who are actually taking the classes, it wouldn't be good.
How come?
Because anyone who is taking the class for a grade, for credit, puts in a lot of time preparing for it, doing the reading and assignments, whereas people who aren't, they might not be as well-prepared, and that would affect the quality of the class discussion.
You mean the discussions wouldn't be at a very high level?
Right, because people who aren't taking the class for a grade would be asking really basic questions. They'll be slowing down the class discussion by taking time to discuss basic stuff that was already covered in the reading assignments.
That's a good point. I can see how that might happen.
Plus, he's wrong about the work it requires for the professor.
But it's true the professor doesn't have to grade anything.
Sure, but there are lots of other little things that can add up to more work, like they'd have to prepare extra handouts for the class, learn extra names, and well, possibly stay after class to answer those students' questions.
Yeah, I guess that's all extra work.
Absolutely. All these little things add up and require the professor's attention.
Question: The woman expresses her opinion about the university's plan. Briefly summarize the plan. Then state her opinion about the plan and explain the reason she gives for holding that opinion. So to make our introduction sentence, I hope you noticed that right here it clearly says, "The university has announced that," clearly stating that this is a plan. It will happen. And then we could honestly just use the hack of using the title. So "The university has announced that it will start a program to provide free tutoring." You could just do that, and it would be perfectly sufficient. But let's go sentence by sentence and see which points are the most important. So right here, "The university has announced that, starting in the fall, free tutoring will be available." Is that useful? Heck yes, it is. That is definitely the most important sentence in this whole paragraph. But let's continue. "The academic dean, James Maxwell, said, da-da-da-da-da." Sorry, James, we don't care. Doesn't matter. "The new program, he said, is designed to assist first-year students who want additional support." Is this important? If you have time, you could definitely add in this part about "students who want additional support with their academic coursework." That's okay, but only if you have the extra time. And then the last student, "The program will be organized so that individual students can arrange to work with tutors majoring, da-da-da." Is that important? Maybe not. Now you could super paraphrase this and say, "Free tutoring will be available from students majoring in their chosen field of study." That could be okay, but it isn't completely necessary. Now let's take a quick look at the script. Man, hey, did you read about this plan? Is that important? No. Woman, "Yeah, and I think it's a really great idea." Is this important? Yes, because it clearly shows that she agrees. With these questions, they'll always state their opinion in the very beginning. They might not clearly say, "I agree," or "I think it's a great idea." It might be like the previous question, where they say, "I'm all for it." So if you're having a difficult time understanding their vocabulary, you should at least pay attention to their intonation. If they seem bubbly, like, "Yeah, I'm all for it." Obviously, that means they agree. Or if their tone is kind of low, "Ugh, I don't like it," or "I disagree." Obviously, they're going to have a negative opinion. So listen for those key differences. Man, why is that? Do we need that? No. Woman, "Well, a lot of new students really need this. It's not just about getting extra help. They'll probably also get information about things like taking notes or the best way to study for exams." Is this important? Yeah, we can include this detail. Man, "Yeah, I barely even knew how to do those things when I first came here." Okay. Woman, "Neither did I. So these are things most students wind up having to learn on their own. That's why many of them have a hard time." Do you need to include this? Eh, maybe not. Uh, man, "It's probably a good idea they can work with someone who has the same interests." Do you need to include his opinion? No, we don't care about anything that the man says in this specific question. Okay, let's look at the next thing the woman says. Right, that would be a real advantage to get information about classes you're gonna need to take from somebody who's already taking them. And then they'll tell you about the best advisors. Is that useful? Yes, very useful, you should include it. And then the man, "I see what you mean, so new students can get access from another student's point of view." Do we need that? No, cuz again, we don't care about his opinion. And then for the woman at the end, exactly, do we need this? No. No, you don't. Time for the integrated lecture. This is structured in the same way as the campus life question, where you'll have the reading, listening, and then your speaking. But there are a few key differences for how you'll answer this question. So let's discuss how to structure your answer. First, for your introduction sentence, this is going to be just a summary of the reading material. That's it. And here's a really easy hack for structuring the introduction sentence. So all you need to do is take the title of whatever the reading material is, then add the word "is" or "are" if it's a plural, and then provide the definition or explanation of what that is. And you can usually find a specific sentence within that reading material that describes that topic. Now, obviously, it would be ideal for you to paraphrase that sentence, but if you're in a pinch, you could directly quote it. Pretty easy, right? And don't forget, you should never spend more than fifteen seconds on your introduction sentence. Now, let's touch on something that a lot of students kind of forget about when it comes to the listening section. You really need to pay attention to the tense of the listening section. In general, the listening section will be structured in one of two ways. The first way will be the lecturer describing a personal story or a story of one of their friends. Or they might be discussing previous research. For all three of these, what tense do you think you need to use? Past tense, meaning after your introduction sentence, everything else in your answer has to be past tense, no matter what. So with this question, to introduce the lecturer's story, you would start out with the lecturer discussed and then talk about their story. On the other hand, if the lecturer is just describing general facts about something, you gotta use present tense, not past. And with this style, you don't really need to mention the lecturer at all. After your introduction sentence, you can just say, "To begin," and then go into your first detail. That would be perfectly sufficient. Now let's practice both question styles so that you can hear the difference. Now let's look at this integrated lecture. Forty-five seconds for reading. Let's go.
Now, listen to part of a lecture on this topic in a psychology class.
Okay, so an example of this from my own life. Five or six years ago, I was helping a friend of mine decide on a house to buy. He had been in the market to buy a house and he had it narrowed down to this one house that he was interested in. What he really liked about this house was it had an excellent location. It was in a great place that was actually in the same part of town where he was working, right up the street from his job, so he wouldn't have far to drive to get to work, which he really liked. However, the downside of this house was that it was smaller than what he was hoping to buy. He'd wanted to buy sort of a big house and this house just wasn't that big. So, it was a tough decision, but my friend eventually did decide to buy the house. And a few years after he made the purchase, I remember we were talking about the decision and why he decided to buy the house. He told me, "Well, of course, it was because of the house's location." He told me how happy he was with the fact that it was so close to his work, how great it was that it was only a few minutes from his job. I said, "Yes, but what about its size? Do you still think the house is kind of small?" And he looked at me kind of surprised. "Small? What do you mean, small?" Like he didn't know what I was talking about. The house's size, a couple of years after buying it, just didn't seem to be on his mind anymore.
Question. Explain the concept of choice supportive bias using details and examples from the listening. Okay, so what's the topic about? Boom, choice supportive bias. So to make your introduction sentence, you would say, "Choice supportive bias is..." And then we want to use the definition from the reading. So, taking a look at this, "People often make decisions by considering the advantages and disadvantages of each option." Is that what a choice supportive bias is? No. However, after a person selects an option, there's a tendency for that person to exhibit the choice supportive bias. Is that exactly what the choice supportive bias is? Not really. What about this? "After selecting an option, a person may begin to favor that option." Does that seem like what the choice supportive bias is? Yes. So in this case, you would kind of want to combine these two sentences into a nice little paraphrase summary of sorts. So you could say, "Choice supportive bias is when a person begins to favor an option that they chose." Done, easy peasy. Let's look at the other sentences, though. Without being fully aware of it, people who exhibit this bias tend to focus on and remember only the advantages of the option they selected. This would also be a good detail, but you don't need to include the entire thing. So going along with what we said before, they begin to favor their option and remember only the advantages of that option. That's totally fine. As time passes, they'll overlook the option's disadvantages, eventually forgetting them. If you wanted, you could say, "They remember only the advantages" and eventually forget the disadvantages. That's okay. But you really don't have to do that much detail if you don't have time. Remember that. Let's take a look at the script to see which details would be the most important to include. So, right off the bat, we can see that it's going to be a story because the professor says, "So, an example of this from my own life." So you will use past tense. And we also know that because everything in here is in past tense. So taking a look at this, "Five or six years ago, I was helping a friend decide which house to buy." You should include that because that's setting the stage for what he's talking about. So the professor discussed how he helped a friend decide which house to buy. There you go. Then you'll essentially want to summarize what's in the rest of this. But there is a lot of extra information, so let's decide which information is and isn't important. "What he really liked about the house was it had an excellent location." So this part about the excellent location, that's important. "It was in a great place that was actually in the same part of town where he was working, da-da-da-da, all about where it is located." Do you need that? No, you won't have time to include that. "However, the downside was that the house was smaller than what he was hoping. He wanted to buy a big house and the house wasn't that big." Do you need to say, "He wanted to buy a big house and the house wasn't that big?" No, but this part is important. "The downside was that the house was smaller than what he was looking for." Great. "So it was a tough decision, but my friend eventually did decide to buy the house." Do you need to include that? No, it's not important. "And a few years after he made the purchase, we were talking about the decision, why he decided to buy the house." Do you need that? No, because it's not important information. It's just about a chit-chat that they were having. Um, "He told me, 'Well, of course, it was because of the house's location.'" Is that important? No. "He told me how happy he was with the fact that it was so close to his work, how great it was that it was only a few minutes from his job." This part is fine, but you don't need to go into all those details. You could just talk about how happy he is that it's close to his work. "This part, I said, 'Yes, but what about the size? Do you think it's kind of small?'" And he looked at me kind of surprised. Do you need to say that? No, that's too much detail, not important. "Small? What do you mean, small?" Like he didn't know what I was talking about. Is that important? Absolutely not. "The house's size, a couple of years after buying it, just didn't seem to be on his mind anymore." Now, this specific sentence, the idea of it is what you need to pay attention to, not the exact words. So here, the main idea of that sentence is he didn't end up caring about the size of the house. It wasn't important anymore. That would be the key detail. So let's look at another one.
Now, listen to part of a lecture from an environmental science class.
Okay, so an example of this is when chickens are used to prepare a field for planting. Farmers who do this have a special kind of little house that they keep their chickens in. This little house has four walls and a roof, but it doesn't have any floor. And it has wheels attached to it, so it can easily be moved from one location to another. So, farmers move this little house to a field where something is going to be planted, say, bean plants. And then the chickens are placed inside the house. Now remember, there's no floor in this house. And what the chickens do is, they walk around inside the house and peck at the soil and eat any weeds or wild plants that they find. And then, when the chickens are done eating the weeds in that location, the farmers move the house to the next section of the field. And again, the chickens peck at the soil and eat the weeds. So the chickens get to eat lots of weeds, which are good for them. Now, this activity is also good for the bean plants that'll be growing in the field. Because when the chickens eat the weeds, they're improving the quality of the soil. Thanks to the chickens, when the bean plants start to grow, there won't be any weeds there to compete with them for crucial resources, like sunlight and water.
Question. Explain how the example from the lecture illustrates the concept of integrated farming. Okay, so what is the topic of this? Boom, integrated farming. Your introduction sentence should be, "Integrated farming is..." And now let's find the definition. So, first sentence, "Many farmers keep animals and raise crops at the same time." Is that integrated farming? No. "While some farmers treat the cultivation of their animals and plants as two separate activities, others integrate the two so that they work together." Does this clearly say that it's integrated farming? No. However, when you look at the next sentence, it says, "This is called integrated farming." Meaning, this sentence is your definition. So you gotta be careful. Sometimes, you'll figure out if it's a definition after the sentence, rather than within the sentence. So, right here, it uses the natural behavior of the animals, da-da-da-da-da. You probably won't have time to say that. And then by integrating animals with crops, they can create a system. You won't have time to say that. So, this sentence is the key for your introduction. Let's take a look at the script to pick out the key details. So with this one, we can clearly see in the introduction sentence that we will be using present tense because it's not a story and it's not talking about previous research, it's just facts. So we see right here, "Chickens are used to prepare a field for planting." Present tense, so your answer should be in present tense. So we can also see that chickens are discussed many times, so you need to make sure that you include chickens in your answer cuz that's nine times that they discuss chickens. So, looking through here, the little key details are the chickens, special kind of house. Do you need to say that it has four walls and a roof? Hmm, maybe not. But this, it doesn't have a floor. That's important. And then, "It has wheels attached to it, so it can easily be moved." Also important, because we talk about moving the house, right here in the next sentence. So, "They move the house to a field where something's going to be planted." Fine. Now remember, there's no floor. So because he said that previously, you definitely need to include that in your answer. Um, not the now remember part. You don't need to say that, but just in the beginning, you would want to mention house with no floor. And then right here, what the chickens do is they walk around inside the house, peck the soil, eat the weeds, and they poop. Chicken poop is good for plants. So that's good. Then when they're done eating the weeds, the farmer moves the house. Also, good to do. And again, the chickens peck at the soil. But with this, it's just repetition, so you don't need to include the detail again. You'll come across that sometimes in the TOEFL exam where they will repeat the same statement over and over. Don't try to include it because you won't have time. What I actually meant to say was if you hear a detail repeated, you should not repeat it in your answer because, again, you only have sixty seconds to do your entire answer with the reading and the listening section. However, if you do hear a detail repeated, that means it is something important and you should include it in your answer. Just only one time. The next bit. Now this activity is also good for the bean plants that'll be growing because when the chickens eat the weeds, they're improving the quality of the soil. Does that seem useful? Yes. Thanks to the chickens, when the bean plants start to grow, there won't be any weeds and they won't have to compete for crucial resources. Does that seem useful? Yes. Definitely want to include that. Now for this part, the thanks to the chickens, eh, you don't need to. That would just waste some time. With the final speaking question, you'll only listen to a lecture and then you'll have just twenty seconds to prepare your answer and then one minute to speak. While it is kind of convenient that you don't have to spend that extra time reading, that does mean that you really, really have to pay attention to that listening section. However, as you continue practicing listening to this style of question, you'll notice that the speaker actually structures their answer in a very easy way. So for instance, in the introduction, they'll always clearly say what the topic of the lecture is about and they organize their answer in pretty much the same way every time. So for this practice, we're actually going to look at the script for a listening lecture first, just so that we can visualize what that structure is like. And then we'll go ahead and do a practice question where you'll listen and then speak your answer. Okay, so let's just look at the structure of this question. In the beginning, so in the last class, we were talking a bit about the history of photography. So what is this going to be about? History of photography. And I was saying with the invention of the camera in the mid to late eighteen hundreds, um, people were able to record realistic images. So that seems like it's going to be important. Camera, realistic images. Up until then, painting portraits, landscapes were recorded, the image of a person's face, all that kind of thing. Whatever. But with the invention of the camera, now there was a new piece of technology, this machine that took realistic images and it had an enormous effect on painting. And there's probably gonna be some kind of pause after that. So from the introduction, we know that there's going to be information about cameras, painting, and how everything changed. And always with these, it'll give two points. So we're going to try and listen to the two ways painting changed after the invention of the camera. So right here, one effect was that, so with this, you know, okay, I need to pay attention. First detail or first reason. Easy. With the next one, photography also affected. Boom, second reason. There you go. And it's always going to be structured like this. They will have very clear transitional words and phrases to help you figure out that first detail and second detail. So now I'll have you answer the question on your own.
Listen to part of a lecture in a biology class.
So we know animals in many climates have to develop strategies, um, ways to protect themselves when the weather becomes especially hot and dry in the summers. Let's start talking about how one small creature, a snail, can do this. Now, as you know, a snail is a very small creature with a soft, moist body, most of which is protected by a hard shell. A snail is a good example of an animal that has developed certain strategies for coping with high temperatures and drought or lack of water. First, to avoid the heat, when the sun comes out, snails move into the shelter of vegetation, um, you know, plants or leaves to get out of the sun and into the shade. Now, of course, the ground can become very hot in the sun. It absorbs and radiates heat, so snails will move up off of the ground to places where it is cooler. They may attach themselves to a wall or a tree where it is cooler than on the ground. Now, it's not just heat that snails need to worry about. They also need to avoid drying out due to lack of water. So during a really warm, dry day or during the summer months, snails secrete a sticky, slimy substance, um, made up of calcium, and it covers the opening of their shell. Uh, covers and closes it up. This keeps the moisture inside the shell and prevents the snails from drying out. Snails can stay inside their shells, closed up like this, for a long time, even several months if it's a really dry summer. Their bodies, well, everything slows down and so they don't need food. They can survive on what food they've stored up. But when it rains and water is available again, the snail opens up its shell to get some.
Question. Using the examples from the professor's lecture, explain how snails survive in hot and dry climates. Okay, so let's discuss the key details that you should have included. And I apologize right now, there's about to be a lot of background noise, but I gotta get this recorded because I have class in five minutes. Okay, taking a look at this. So we know the animals in many climates have to develop strategies to protect themselves when the weather becomes hot and dry in the summers. So right here, we have those key things, animals protecting themselves in hot and dry summers. Let's start talking about one small animal. There's my dog. A snail. So snails. Pay attention to that. Um, this snail is a very small creature with a soft, moist body, mm, and it's protected by a hard shell. Do we need to include this? Eh, maybe not. Um, a snail is a good example of an animal that has developed certain strategies for coping with high temperatures. Do you need to include all of these things? No. But you can say that the snail has developed certain strategies for coping with high temperatures. That's fine. If you want, you could say a drought or a lack of water. Now, like I said, with the last one, it very clearly tells you where that first idea is. Because here it says, first. So first, to avoid the heat, and then it gives you the information. But with the second detail, it's a little different. It says, now, it's not just heat the snails need to worry about. Obviously, it's not saying second or also just yet. But the speaker's tone changed. So with the way that they said it, you can tell that they're leading into the next idea. Now, it's not just heat this snails need to worry about. With that kind of tone, you know that they're about to say that second idea. And then in the second idea, they also need to avoid drying out. So now we have the also showing that additional information. Um, so even if this sentence was not included, you would know that they're about to talk about that second detail because of that key word, also. And now it's time to wrap it all up with the academic writing discussion. With this writing assignment, you'll read a prompt from a professor and then two responses from other students. Your job is to contribute to the discussion by either agreeing or disagreeing with the other students or coming up with your own unique ideas on your own. With this response, you'll have ten minutes total to work on it and you need to write a minimum of one hundred words. So while I was really against templates for the previous TOEFL independent writing question, which doesn't exist anymore, with the academic discussion, because the prompt structures are really similar and your writing is so short, templates are pretty useful for this and they're relatively universal for any topic that you may be presented with. So let's take a look at two template styles that I highly recommend. But do keep in mind that you should try to use some synonyms or try to change a few little things in here just to make it unique to you and your writing style. So if you want to focus on expanding on and challenging points made by the other students, you can structure your answer like this. This is a challenging topic, but I think that, and then respond directly to the question. And then moving along, I strongly agree with so-and-so's idea that, then you mention that point made by the student. I'd add that and then add more of your own ideas to that same point. While other student raised the relevant point that, mention their idea, he or she, you could also use the pronoun they, that's completely sufficient, didn't mention that, and then challenge their point or say something opposite to their point. And you'll end it with a for example and add more details to how you were arguing against their point. But a lot of people like to ignore the ideas that are presented by the other students and just discuss their own opinions. And that's perfectly okay. So let's take a look at a prompt that will allow you to do that. While I appreciate the points mentioned by both each student, I think that, and then explain your own ideas. Remember that. Elaborate a little more on your point. So, continue on your point a bit more. Some people may feel that, then you should mention a possible rebuttal or opposite opinion from what you had. But, then you can respond to this and provide your own examples for why that is wrong. So today, we're going to practice answering the academic discussion questions with both of these template styles. To make this a bit easier, I'll have the template on the screen along with the academic questions so that you can reference it as you're writing your answer. Now, even if your personal beliefs are different from the template that I assigned for that question, I still want you to follow the template because it's a really good way for you to practice seeing both sides of an argument because sometimes you need to provide details and examples that are opposite from what your heart tells you. because sometimes you need to provide details and examples that are opposite from what your heart tells you. because sometimes you need to provide details and examples that are opposite from what your heart tells you. because sometimes you need to provide details and examples that are opposite from what your heart tells you. You survived today's massive TOEFL study session. If you found today's video helpful, don't forget to like and subscribe for more videos just like this. And if you would like more TOEFL practice, definitely check out my playlist right over here. Or if you really enjoyed this study session-style video, check out that playlist right over there. Happy studying, and I'll see you later.